Okay, any reason to wait.
Good morning. It's Monday, May 4th. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. It's 10:00 a.m. First item of business is the pledge of allegiance. Carl, could you lead us in there?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, item number two is public forum. Anybody wishing to speak for a few minutes on any agenda item? Seeing no one. Item number three, approval of minutes of April 20th, regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the special meeting of April 23rd. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number four, Board of Ed, Director of Operations, Cliff Grunum, considering take possible action on award of bid number 22-1415, Elizabeth C. Adams Middle School Elevator Modernization.
Good morning. Thanks for having me. We're gearing up for the summer and all the projects. This project specifically is to replace the mechanical systems and to modernize the existing car for the elevator at Adams. The elevator is original from 1975 approximately. It's had some past upgrades as pieces have failed, but it's in need of a major overhaul. So we went out to bid and we did receive back five bids. We had a low bidder that came in at $308,803 out of Norwich Schnep Construction. The bid itself was reviewed by the Standing Building Committee and the architect and engineer for the project, which is Silver Petrosalian Associates. They did a scope review with the company. They've dealt with the company in the past, so they know of the company and it's a reputable company, so that was good news. Silver Petrosalian Associates did make a recommendation to award the bid to Schnep Construction. The Standing Building Committee reviewed it at their special meeting last week and they went through the bid as well as there is an allowance and a unit price. They did discuss those as well, so they thoroughly vetted the whole bid. And they did vote to award, make the recommendation to award the bid to Schnep Construction for the $308,803. The project is slated for the summer. That's why we're pushing along as quick as we can. It will be a tight timeline. We want to get everything ordered now as early as possible. Construction will start just after school gets out for the summer and we expect it to be complete if it holds schedule and we don't run into any unforeseen issues with the demolition and stuff. To be finished the week before school starts or the week school starts, right there. It's a very close project with our schedules. So it's, the funding for the project is from this year's bond, the 2015 bond referendum. We have approximately about $520,000 in that referendum for this project. So we're well under our estimated bid funds.
Cliff, I'm going to pitch you, what is de-watering?
Yeah, right.
Explain the allowances.
All right. So de-watering is the process of essentially removing any of the water from the elevator pit or the, when we pull out the...
Now the water table's too high.
Correct. So they actually are going to pull out the cylinder, so there's a potential there could be water inside the casing, between the casing and the cylinder, or when we pull the casing out, we could get water into that hole. So we'd have to remove that water. So what we did was allowance one, which is built into the base contract, is two days of de-watering. And then anything above and beyond that, it goes to that unit price. So again, we vetted it pretty thoroughly, so we don't expect it to be more than a couple of days if needed at all.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
First bid in a long time where, actually, the bids are all bunched. They're all pretty close.
Very good.
One's three times, one's half.
They're next in tight.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jim, just in time. Next item, number five, Town Engineer Jim Portley. The first item is discuss and take possible action on award rebid number 24-1415, retain wall construction on foul...
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is the retaining wall, well, actually, it's a retaining wall that was constructed to repair damage that was associated with Sandy. The whole side of the roadway got washed out back then. We had initial bid, but there was an error in our calculations on the steel reinforcing that we're going to do all, so be fair to all the bidders, we rebid the project. Low bidder was an outfit out of Deep River Winthrop Construction. They've been in business about three years. Nice young company, but they don't really have the experience to attack a job like this. This is right on, right on the water. We have to drill rebar into the exposed granite surface that's there. You know, we have to pour a footie and pour the wall. They did give me some samples of their work. I went out and looked at one of the jobs. I wasn't pleased with it. Just, it was, it was fine. It was back from a beach in Clinton. It was, but the finish wasn't what I would expect down there and I think we would have a problem with it. So I called them and let them know that and I would recommend we go to the next lowest bidder. It's only a difference of $2,000 as Lafada and Son. They've got a wealth of experience in...
$10,000.
No, it's $132. I'm sorry, $132. But for the sake of the exposure and the, and the experience, I think the, I would recommend that the second lowest bidder, Lafada and Son, be awarded the contract for the amount of $132, $198.
Okay, for the purposes of discussion, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, we went and looked at their work, Winthrop's work, and it just...
It didn't show the experience or the quality that what I'm expecting. We, it's not like a job if it goes wrong, you can go back and fix it. If it's a retaining wall right on the rock...
It's up high.
You're gonna...
Limited margin of error type thing.
Zero. Yeah. So I, you know, if there was a catch base in the middle of town, sure, that's fine. You can try and give guys some experience, but this is too much exposure. And we're going to have to shut the road down. We're going to have to do this work. People have lived with this for over two years now with the wall being not there. We've had barricades up. I'd like to get this done once and for all.
Sure, procedurally, there's no way we can go back to Lafada and say, you know?
I don't think so.
You've got to float it, you know?
Is the time it takes an issue too? Lafada, is Lafada a bigger operation?
Bigger operation, more heavier equipment.
Well, you know, I have to depend on your experience, obviously. You've got so much work going on that, you know, I think the comfort level of having somebody that you've worked with and, you know, isn't going to require any excessive amount of oversight or redo or testing. It's frankly substantial difference, but I can appreciate, you know, your perspective because we've got so much going on this year. This is coming off of this winter, plus what we've got going on, might be one of those situations where you get what you pay for at that time.
I mean, Lafada's been around a long while. I've had some experience with them.
Many times, yeah.
And he's done a lot of work in town.
Well, plus this isn't, you know, this is a tricky job with sea wall, saltwater and whatnot.
And it's right there. I mean, there's no buffer between that and the sun.
There's no, you know, we're under constraints with DEP because we got, we have to limit our exposure. It's a very sensitive environment.
And then the other concern is, you know, sure, okay, we might get through this job with enough inspections and everything, but five years down the pike, you know, concrete starts flaking off or cracking or whatever.
And that's the key. A lot of times with, and there was, the bid spelled out a finishing procedure that builds a very tight surface to the, to the concrete. The job that we looked at was, it was, they poured the concrete, it was all finished, then they applied a finish after the fact. When you do that, water can get in there and it can start flaking and discoloring. And that was the wall I looked at up in Clinton. You can't do that. You have to finish the concrete right away, you know, and that, that entails rubbing the concrete and rubbing in materials so that it seals all the voids in the concrete. Our concrete, when you look at it, looks like a solid mass, but there's always little air bubbles that there that you have to seal off so the water can't penetrate. Once that water penetrates, it starts to deteriorate. So, you know, often said about roadways, water is insidious. Once it gets in there, it can start breaking up. So we, we want to make sure this is properly finished and properly sealed.
So how is this pricing, you know, work out in the budget that we have this way?
Well, actually, I, the regional history we had was $175,000, so we're considerably below budget. We...
In which pocket? Is this out of operating?
This is, we're taking this out of the old quarry budget for that road. We still, we still have an application into FEMA for, for the money, but they've been so slow in coming that...
But we're still well under what you thought it might cost.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Do we have a motion? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, most packed. Number two for you. Jim, consider and take possible action on recommendation to participate in the state road salt bid. Oh, it's that time already.
Yeah. We haven't even cleaned up the sand yet. It's just a perfunctory process that we go through. We get in that this qualifies us to, to take part in the state if it's a good...
How's the salt price this year? I saw they...
No, we don't know yet. They've been, they were up this last year.
So they have a big pile down there in Haven, I saw.
Yeah, so maybe the price will come back down.
Yeah, right. Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
And there's one more item that's not on the agenda and it's not really a duty at time. Just wanted to bring the Board of Selectmen up to date. The Water Company wants to, anticipation of the reconstruction of Long Hill Road, wants to replace their water main. And they want to do it right away.
And they move that hydrant back?
They're going to move the hydrant back, yes. They want to start this week. We had told them they, they would have to maintain one lane of traffic, but that first section off Route 1 is so narrow, it's, it's going to be impossible. So we've agreed to allow them to close the road after the school buses, let, all the school buses will be allowed to pass. They'll have to move their equipment. The rest of the time, from Route 1 up to Hubbard Road, we're going to detour traffic. So at least, at least until they get near Fireman's Field where the road widens out a little bit. But that first section, if you're, you know, right, right from that...
For how long?
It should, it should be like a week. It shouldn't be any longer than that.
So we're going to open the road early in the day when the buses are running and then detour it?
Yeah, they're going to allow buses to go through whenever they come through. They're, they're not going to be rerouted, all the school buses.
Okay, so there's going to be a travel lane, but we're going to shut it down periodically?
Yeah, right. And they're going to, and they're going to, you know, for people just coming and going, they're going to be, there's going to be police out. They're going to detour them around Hubbard Road, get up that way, whatever the way they want to go, they can go to Flagmarsh, whatever, if they're going north on Long Hill. But there will, there will be just that short, just...
And when's that going to happen?
Starting this week.
Get it over with fast.
Huh?
Get it over with fast.
Yeah. It, they, they were accelerated because the state is going to be repaving Route 1 from the Branford line over to York Street. And they wanted to make sure they got all the utility work done before they did that. And they're going to do that...
When are they going to be paving that?
July.
Busy, busy summer, you know, between town, state.
And the Westland Avenue project is going well. Nice to talk along. We've had minimal amount of complaints. We've got skim cut on everything. It's going, it's going to be very nice. Super.
Before Jim goes, you want to say something about the cruise?
Yeah, I really want to appreciate what you did over the weekend for the concert on Friday and all of that kind of stuff. It was really great. Never mind the winter project.
Well, I think it was fall hands on deck. Everybody kind of contributed or whatever.
Everybody did. I mean, it was such a fluid, you know, event and I really appreciate when we needed something, it just got done. It was great.
Well, thank you. That's my half for everybody else. I think there was so much effort on part of, a lot of people at the time was terrific.
Right, just tell everybody.
As an old man, you kind of get to be, oh my god.
Did you autograph?
No. But when I saw the crowd out there...
That's when it was Perry Como, he was...
I was waiting for Bingo to come out. But it was, it was just, it was terrific. I didn't expect to be so pleased when I'm standing out there. I was listening to Pam sing and it was just great.
I had a young woman come up to me in Big Lake and say how beautiful the town looked. That's the first time it ever happened.
Thursday morning, I, I came in early and I was driving around in green and before all the trucks got out there, I've never seen the green so beautiful. It was just, the trees were budding and the green grass was so green. Everybody cleaned everything up.
Couple of trees actually butted in.
Yeah.
One more week and it would have been even more spectacular. Okay.
Yeah, but then we wouldn't have been able to see it from Pam's office.
All right, forget the size.
Thank you. I'm good. Thank you.
All right, item number six. Mitch Golvad, UN Resources Director, discuss and take possible action on memorandum of understanding with Columbia Southern University.
Good morning. I had been approached by one of our employees who wanted to take some courses, online courses at Columbia Southern University, which is located Orange Beach, Alabama, and asked about a partnership that certain, that some municipalities had entered into with Columbia Southern. Asked if you're willing to do the same. I did some research into it, spoke to a few different people, including the outreach director at Columbia Southern, and got their memorandum of understanding, which you have in front of you. What this would do is allow any employees that do sign up to take courses to them a 10% tuition discount and textbooks provided at no cost, among other things. The individual is a firefighter and I did check with the fire chief about this first and he was, he endorsed this. He's heard of it and he thinks it's a good idea. So it's not going to cost us anything. The only things that I have to do or we have to do here is inform member, inform our employees that we have this partnership, which I will do via email, also through, if anybody watches this program here. Also, keep, we'll keep the materials on site. We'll assign a liaison who will be me and we'll provide them information about any benefits, fares that we have, which we have one coming up June 3rd. I don't know if they'll make it up for June 3rd, but we'll do that if this, this does pass. And so we have a very similar situation with Post University. You've already approved. It's just another opportunity for our employees to continue education at a discount.
That's great. Appreciate it.
Any questions? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we, now that's the next item.
Head commission.
We have an extra sign on the green for the, do this way. Okay, appointments and resignations. Act on a recommendation to move William Butterly from alternate to regular member of the Agricultural Commission to, to fill a vacancy for a term to expire September 29th, 2018.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Act on a recommend, 7.2, act on a recommendation to appoint Ann McIntyre Leener as an alternate to the Agricultural Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire September 29th, 2018.
I would ask that we table this and we get an application and resume from Ann. With Butterly, he's been on, so we have his information on file. I have no reason not to think she would not be a good member, but we don't have the information that we normally require.
There's no issues with quorum for that commission or anything?
Uh, no. Not that I'm aware, no.
All right, is that a motion? How was she recommended?
By, by Tom Pinchbeck in the email. He just put her name on. She, she probably doesn't even know that she needs to fill out the form, so.
Oh, absolutely, okay. So that a motion to table?
Uh, second.
All in favor?
Okay. Trace, would you email him back and just tell him they get the stuff?
Yeah, because we need to follow that procedure.
Yep. We have to add one item to the agenda and application to place a sign on the green. I think we all have one in front of us. Cub Scout Pack 475, do I have a motion?
I would move that we add it to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I would move that we approve the sign for the Boy, for the Cub Scouts.
Second.
All opposed? Passing. Correspondence. I don't have any. Anybody else?
Nope.
Committee reports?
Again, I would remind those that hear this about the Energy Task Forces Program. Tracy, you know, I meant to mention that there's a slight misprint in the minutes. It's not vendors, it's actually car, the eight people that are showing up for the event to dedicate the electric vehicle charging station are actually car van, or car dealers bringing electric charged, charging cars. So there will be at least eight cars here, various models and sizes and makes and sizes. So it's the 16th.
May 16th?
May 16th. I think it's between 10 and 3. I think ceremonies are, probably won't take very long. We're scheduled for 12. I unfortunately will not be here. I'm in New Hampshire, but Joe is aware of it and will cut the ribbon or whatever, but should be fine. There's also a Habitat for Humanities event on the green, so there could be a lot of activity down here.
Good. All right.
And I will say, the, the charger is working.
Yeah, here's the car here the other day.
If you have a, you know, it doesn't have to be dedicated on the 16th. If you have the appropriate card, the charger is working.
Okay. Great, great job. All business.
Yes. Pam, can I ask you a question on our, when we approved the testing by deep, you were going to check with an environmental attorney. Were there any results from that conversation?
Yes, we did contact our attorney, environmental lawyer, and she spoke to deep directly because she has more insight to probe a little bit deeper in terms of what they were doing and how they're going about it. What is going to happen is deep is going to, we're basically tabling the request to, to access the town property. They're going to do it in a different order. They're going to, they're going to test the property that has the alleged contamination first. And when they do that, then it will determine what they would test our property, the town's property. So, you know, from an environmental standpoint, she did not want them to, want deep to test, you know, a wide variety of things on, on the town property. She wants to keep it limited to whatever the alleged contamination is on the property. So basically, that's what's going on.
Okay, thank you. Any other old business? Any new business coming? Okay, public forum, three minutes on any item.
Hi, George Mack from Hemlock Avenue.
Good morning.
Good morning.
While researching my tax records, I found what I believe is a profoundly unfair system of assessing and evaluating of land in parts of Guilford. Apparently using some sort of algorithms, all lots on my street have exactly the same value, $198,000, regardless of lot size, improvement on the land, or any other factors. To be precise, my one acre is assessed the same value as my neighbor's three-plus acres. When asked, the assessor's answer was, "A lot is a lot is a lot." This answer was echoed by the real estate agent member of the Assessment Review Board. Neither the assessor nor the review board seemed willing to or able to really explain how the number 188,000, $198,000 was reached. It is my opinion and the opinion of most of those charged with determining land values, that the true market value of land is determined by factors such as access to utilities, topography, presence of sewers, public transportation, frontage on the street, proximity to the shore, or even shopping. In addition, lot size is always considered a factor. Unfortunately, on my street, lot size plays absolutely no factor. Remember, the answer I received more than once is that a lot is a lot is a lot. I am confident that no one here would believe that a lot on the town green or along the water would be valued using that same flippant response that a lot is a lot is a lot. A simple review of tax assessment records shows that lot size plays a real role in determining market values and thus tax assessment in other parts of town, not just on my street. To show the ludicrous nature of this present system, let me give a quick hypothetical. If my home is destroyed and I choose not to rebuild, my taxes would be on the $198,000 assessed value of my land. If however, I chose to sell my land to my neighbor or even gift it to him, I would have no taxes owed to Guilford. The great irony is that his taxes would also not increase. For now, his lot would be two acres, but because of Guilford's bizarre system of assessment, a lot's a lot a lot, his new two-acre property would still only be worth $198,000 for tax purposes. Finally, I would respectfully request that this board invite the assessor to a meeting of this body and have him explain to the public in detail exactly how land is evaluated and assessed in the various parts of Guilford. I'm sure I'm not the only taxpayer who believes the current system is grossly unfair and inequitable. It would seem that the present system is designed more for the convenience of the assessor rather than really examining the actual property and determining its market value. Since there are huge financial consequences to me and to all taxpayers of the assessor's decision on the market value of land, I think I and the public deserve a detailed explanation in writing as to how my land valuations were made. Again, since lot size was completely ignored in my case, exactly what criteria were used to come up with the magical number of $198,000 for all properties on my street? In closing, I noticed that the proposed budget this year requests $110,000 for outside counsel to litigate Assessment Review Board complaints brought by taxpayers. Maybe if the assessments were more fair and more equitable initially, the town could save on litigation costs. Thank you.
Before you, before you go, could we get a copy of that? Because we're going to have to discuss it.
Absolutely. You can have this. I have it on my computer.
You sure?
Absolutely.
Why don't you email to us and then we can...
You have handwritten notes, though.
The handwritten part is just the last part. I didn't have on my computer initially.
Okay. Why don't you email it to the Selectmen's office and we can distribute it.
Okay, that'd be great.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
I didn't expect to see me here for public comment, but I would like to comment on the events of last Friday, May 1st. I think, you touched on this with Jim Portley earlier, but I think kudos to the entire town. Kudos to the Board of Selectmen. It was quite a monumental effort to pull off in just a few days Nick Fratiani Day. At a time when many municipalities are seen in a negative light, Guilford put it positive light and its best foot forward last Friday. I think special recognition should be paid to the first Selectman, Joe Maza. Charles, you stepped in and did a fantastic job putting things together with Marty Carlson. The two of you were quite a team. Certainly, the members of the Board of Selectmen staff, Rick Maynard and the entire Park and Recreation staff, Brian McLoane with Economic Development, our Police Department, our Fire Department, our Public Works Department. It took quite a bit to pull this off. It doesn't just happen. And the cooperation that I saw... And the cooperation that I saw last week between departments, between town officials and all over was just overwhelming and it made me proud. I am not, as most people know, I am not a resident of Guilford. Made me proud to be an employee, made me proud to be part of the crowd on Monday for Nick Fratiani Day. You did yourselves well. I'm sure it will show very positively on Wednesday night's national television and I just want to say on behalf of myself, thank you Guilford for a job well done.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I think the town demonstrated what a great town it is.
You did a great job. You all did.
Okay, if there's anything else?
Move to a chart.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.